Good morning. I'd like to welcome you to the Gadsden City Council meeting. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Smith to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's compose our heart with prayer. Hope we come to you the humblest way we know how. We've come with bowed heads and humble hearts, realizing oh God, that is in you, that we live and move and have our beings. We want to acknowledge you in all our ways. We know that you're direct our paths, so even on today, we need your Spirit to lead us, to guide us. We request it in petitioning insight and wisdom and revelation from Ojai so that we can continue to serve the constituents of Gadsden. The powers that be have been ordained of God according to your word, so we lift up our mayor and staff, we lift up this council, lift up every department head, and God, we just ask that you're blessed upon this meeting today. We ask it all in Jesus' name we pray. In all that agreement, say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna have a little slight deviation from our agenda today, a kind of a point of personal privilege here. I would like to invite Chip Rowan of Beautiful Rainbow Cafe to come forward along with one of his students, Candido. And I'm gonna ask Chip to kinda give a explanation of why he's here today, but I'll give you a sneak preview Thursday, this Thursday, right?
Next Wednesday, Valentine's Day.
Valentine's Day is the seventh anniversary of the Beautiful Rainbow Cafe. And so that's just one of the reasons why Chip is here today. But Chip, tell us about that and tell us about Candido.
Well, first of all, it's a day of a lot of reflection, and thank you, Kent, for inviting us here today. It is this next Valentine, uh, next week, Valentine's Day is the seventh anniversary of the opening of Beautiful Rainbow Cafe, and how time flies, right? And it's, and just to remind you, of course, Beautiful Rainbow Cafe is a partnership between the Gadsden City Schools and the city. And because we're located in the public library, and from the very beginning, this has been a partnership with the city. And it's been a wonderful partnership that over the years, as many of you know, has led to a really great program at Beautiful Rainbow. We've been recognized as the best work-based learning program in the entire state by the governor. Many of you on the council and the mayor individually, and in the legal department, have been individually involved as supporters of the cafe in many different capacities, helping us with students, helping us with legal issues, helping us with funding, helping us remain in the library. So it was seven years ago that the then-director of the library, Amanda Jackson, invited us to come in and renovate the space that is now Beautiful Rainbow Cafe. And as of this week, it depends on what, something that happens with Candido this week, but as of this week, we have placed 45 students from Beautiful Rainbow Cafe in private employment, and as you know, because we've been here about these things, in special programs in universities in this state, at Auburn and at the University of Alabama. So it's, it's been a great collaboration, and we're here to invite you to come celebrate with us next Valentine's Day. Between 11:00 and 1:00, we'll be having a buffet at the cafe, and some musicians from the high school will be playing. So y'all, please come out and help us celebrate. And Kent asked me to talk about Candido. Candido Lucas, I've been his teacher for nine years now, I think. So Candido is gonna be singing the National Anthem in a few minutes, which I think is so appropriate because Candido was an asylee that came from Guatemala nine years ago, unaccompanied, crossed the border, was reunited with his family later, but at that time spoke no English, not even Spanish, he spoke a Mayan dialect.
Gahombar.
Yes, and could not read, and do you mind if I tell these stories about, you don't mind, do you? So, and was, had grown up in such a situation where at the school, he didn't know how to use forks or spoons or anything. And now, he has become such a remarkable young man, somebody that, you know, was one of my favorites. He is a great worker at the cafe, he is a member of the marching band at Gadsden City, he's been the coronation king at Gadsden City, he's won talent shows, somebody that just won't stop learning, won't stop enjoying life. And so he was selected too recently to sing the National Anthem in an event, and Kent wanted him to share that with you today, so can you do that for us, Candido?
Let's all stand.
Oh, say, can you see? By the dawn's early light, what surprise we have? What sagary sweet, sweet, sweet. Whose voice swipes in brown stone through the perilous fire of the rainbow we watch? What sagary the screaming? And the rock and red clay does pass forth in the air, gave to, to the night. Tower flag was still there. Oh, say that, that star spangled banner yet we, of the rainbow of the free, and the home of the brave.
Just, just a testament to the opportunity that we still provide here. And so, and we're gonna wish Candido luck, because this is his last year of high school, and he'll be leaving us, but he, you, you wanna tell him what's going on Thursday?
So, I'm, I'm interviewing for, in a public, I got interview at public.
He's got a job interview, so he's gonna be, we're trying to find him a job, so we're gonna wish him luck on Thursday at his job interview. And again, we would really be delighted if you guys joined us next week for our celebration.
Chip, who's his job interview with? In case they don't give him the job, we'll raise their business license.
It's actually Publix, is that what he said?
Publix.
They're for Rainbow City.
He has other opportunities.
At the Room Machiney.
I was about to say, Chip, I know we had spoken a few weeks back, maybe, about trying to get in touch with some of the leadership at Food City, if, if that's still something that...
That's, that's, we, we need plans, yes.
Okay. I'll follow up with you.
Thank you, yes, we did talk about, thank you, Jason.
So is the dinner on Valentine's Day?
It's at lunch on Valentine's Day, 11:00 to 1:00, and it's a buffet, and, and, and like I said, we'll have some entertainment there from the, from the high school.
Thank you.
Candido, that was fabulous, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
That's, that is wonderful.
Great job, man, great job.
I also would like to recognize Ms. Sharon Miness with our Board of Education, and also Keith Blackwell with our new superintendent, the Board of Education. I know Ms. Miness, you're, this, this program, the cafe, comes under your, your, your watch. You, you've been closely involved for seven years. If you'd like to say anything, you're, you're welcome to speak since you've come, we always welcome you and Mr. Blackwell. Anytime y'all come, you're welcome to share with us.
I would just like to just thank the city for allowing us the opportunity to partner with you, and for the support that you give our students in Gadsden City. Chip is the mastermind behind this project, and anybody that knows Chip, you typically can't say no to him if he has a good idea, so my hats is off to Chip. You know, we're gonna miss Chip, he's going to Spain, but he's given me in-depth directions as to how to carry this program on, so we hope to continue to still offer the quality education that we've offered our students. And once again, just thank you for the partnership and the support.
Thank you, thank you. You know, that, one of my running jokes with Chip is that this council has not voted to approve Chip moving to Spain, so Chip, Chip thinks he's moving to Spain, so that's, that's kinda, that's, that's one of our running jokes. Thank you, Chip, for taking time out, I know you got lunch to do, thanks, thanks, Candido. All right, God, y'all, what a, just what a great moment, what a great story. That's what America's all about. All right, now, where am I? I'm at number five, I think, on the agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting held on January 30th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Item six, the Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of January 26th through February 1st.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item seven, proclamations, Mayor, you have any?
Mr. President, if I could just say one comment while Mr. Blackwell's here?
Yes.
He, he brought to me his daughter and about something called a quip a dream, she is in medical school, is that correct?
She's still undergrad.
She's still undergrad at UAB, but trying to get in medical school. But she came to us with this idea on her own to drop off gently-used children's sport equipment at Carver Community Center, East Gadsden Community Center, and City Hall. And we're gonna distribute it to children in the community that can't afford it. You would not believe the equipment we've already secured, and this is all because of her, and what is her name? Keith? Kylie Blackwell. But it's Superintendent Blackwell's daughter, and he and Tina King and myself are heading this up, and this is just a great program, that was one of our announcers, so I just wanted to say it while he was here.
I appreciate you saying that, and I saw the video on that, Keith, and tell Kylie thank you so much, what a great idea, what a, what a, you know, saw a need and then just filled the need, so kudos to her, y'all, y'all raised a fine young lady.
And my ask to you as a council is to really push that, I know Ms. Smith is here, she'll hear me tonight, or maybe, but we do have a lot of kids, especially, I'm a big proponent of girls sports, and things like softball, we have a lot of girls who can't play or are just can't get into it because they can't afford it, that's a, that's a pricey sport, you know, fast, and quick, and slow, so the more that we can give, the more opportunity for them to play. And you can get all kinds of the benefits of playing sports early, you know, the health, mental health and all that, but please, within your district, push that to get people to know, it's not, it's not just for softball, but it's just across the board, but that's one of the big things of some of the girls sports, so thank you, Mayor, for mentioning that, and we'll take all that we can get, thank you.
Thank you, we sure will.
Do we have any information that can be forwarded to us, that we can put?
So Ms. King is putting together a flower, and she's gonna get it out to all of y'all to put out in the community centers and in your district.
I was thinking the same thing, we could share that on our neighborhood watch pages and stuff.
Well, that, what a great place to do it, too, here in the City of Gadsden, I was taking the opportunity, too, to brag on Jen Wethington, I didn't realize this until this weekend, I was actually reading an article on the Alabama High School Athletic Association website. The City of Gadsden has 131 basketball teams in our public basketball program, we are the largest publicly operated basketball program in the state of Alabama. 131 teams, not players, teams, in our league, in our city league, so we could definitely use all the equipment we can get to get every one of those kids on the court.
Good point. Thank you. Eight, eight counties that surround us, wow. Well, that is a good, that's a lot of work, appreciate all the work she's doing, and all the employees. All right, that's, move to item eight, there's unfinished business, we have none today. Item nine is a resolution authorizing application and acceptance of outdoor recreation legacy partnership grant. This is administered by the Land and Water Conservation Fund through a DECA. This is for a proposed downtown Gadsden Greenway biking/walking trail and requires a 50% match. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? No discussion, all right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 10 is a resolution authorizing purchase from Insane Impact LLC through the U.S. General Services Administration Disaster Purchasing Program. This is for purchase of a mobile LED trailer, and the amount is $146,500. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 11 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Alabama Department of Transportation. This is for a special work authorization agreement with ALDOT related to the proposed relocation of Highway 411, and the estimated amount is $50,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, this goes in line with the vision that we had when we first came into office of relocating 411. Heath and I have been working with the highway and the federal highway department and everything, it's been moving forward quite nicely, so we're excited about this, I think this would be, this will be legendary once it's done, but it's moving in the right direction.
It's exciting, thank you, appreciate it. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 12 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Ira Phillips Incorporated. This is a license agreement regarding electric vehicle charging stations to be located at the venue and behind the cultural arts center. The term is 10 years with two options to renew of three years each, and the amount is $1 per year. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanna say thank you to Mr. Phillips at Ira Phillips, and Jonathan Tang, and of course, the brains of that operation, Kate Phillips-Tang, Jonathan's wife. This is an awesome partnership, we already work with Ira Phillips really well on our fuel for the city, and this is a great extension of that, and I think it's gonna be a nice straw.
All right, thank you for that. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 13 is another resolution, this authorizes agreement with Train US Incorporated. This is for maintenance of the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning units at the venue located at 201 George Wallace Drive. The amount is $28,948.41 for year one, $30,395.83 for year two, and $31,915.62 for year three. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 14 is new business, I believe we have a few items today, Councilman Wilson.
Yes, Mr. President, excuse me, I got a couple here, three or four, I think. The first one comes from the legal department, this is technically a little, a little housekeeping on a document that we've signed, so some of y'all may remember, last year, we agreed through the leadership of David Hooks at the IDA Department, we made a deal with the Alabama Department of Rehabilitation, Rehabilitative Services, to issue a bond that would pay for the construction of a brand-new facility for them here in Gadsden, which would keep them operating here in Gadsden. I think it creates or preserves about 60 jobs, it's gonna be a wonderful facility, so we're issuing the bonds, and then they're paying us for the facility, which will offset the cost of the bond, so it won't cost the City of Gadsden anything, and we get to keep this awesome program that provides rehabilitative services for, I think, seven surrounding counties. So as part of just the, again, the administrative housekeeping here, these bonds were issued in 2023, and the document that we approved, the ordinance we approved, referenced the bonds were issued in 2023. That project has rolled over now to 2024, so all we're doing is, is going back and changing the language in the original ordinance from Bond Series 2023-A to Bond Series 2024-A. So again, it doesn't change the structure of the agreement at all, other than to update it to the 2024 timeline, so in order to keep this project moving forward, I would ask that we suspend the rules and consider that under new business today, please.
All right, there's the second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for immediate consideration.
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, Mr. President, the next one I have is also from the legal department, and again, this is just kind of a technicality, as we move forward with the support of the Gadsden Middle School Scholars Bowl team. All of our middle schools here in Gadsden have a Scholars Bowl, some of y'all might have called it Quiz Bowl when you were kids, but Gadsden Middle School specifically is qualified for the state tournament, and then they will go on to, to participate in the national tournament in Chicago, and so the council and the mayor's office have expressed an interest in supporting this trip financially, to help offset the, the expense of representing the city on a state and national level. So this ordinance would, would authorize the expenditure of discretionary funds to the Gadsden Middle School Scholars Bowl team, so given that the trip is coming up on February the 24th, I would ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Okay, Mr. President, the next one I have, and, oh, I'm sorry, move to adopt, this is the second week in a row, I've just jumped right over that, I apologize, move to adopt, please.
Steve.
Councilman Smith has a second, yes. Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I apologize, it's 11:48, and I'm already hungry, I was just, got out ahead of myself there. Okay, Mr. President, these next two are, are combined or linked to one another, but I'll go through each one of them quickly individually. This is a resolution authorizing use of funds from our undesignated or unassigned fund balance to address several different things that the mayor has identified as a priority for the city, and this council has agreed is a priority. One would be $10,250 for the remaining balance of an AED grant for the Gadsden Police Department so that they can have AED systems in their vehicles. Another, the next line item would be $740,625 to purchase 15 brand-new Tahoe police-issue vehicles, an additional $300,000 to equip those 15 police vehicles with the, with the police package, $600,000 to settle a lawsuit with Riverview Regional Medical Center, similar to what we had to do, although not quite as expensive as what we did earlier with Gadsden Regional Medical Center concerning sales tax that were paid on certain medical equipment devices. $100,000 to, to fund the legal department here, that the legal department's budget was, was restricted somewhat this year in the budget, and those funds have been expired, or have been used, so we're gonna add another $100,000 to the operating budget of the legal department to get us through the year. $240,000 for a brand-new loader truck for the Public Works Department, for all those who have seen the, the wonderful work we're doing cleaning up the riverfront, all up and down Rainbow Drive and several other places, this $240,000 will allow us to continue to do improvement projects like that all over the city. $200,000 for flock cameras to be located in various locations in the city, this is a partnership with Alabama Power that allow us to put up some intersection cameras at strategic intersections throughout the city. This will assist the police department in solving crimes, specifically when a criminal flees in a vehicle, this will allow us to go back and utilize these camera systems to identify what their route is away from a crime scene, maybe identify a tag number or something that will help assist in, in those investigations. And then finally, a $200,000 expense for IT projects related to our relocation to the former Regent's Bank building, which will become the new City Hall, so this will be $200,000 to rewire the building, make some improvements to the existing wiring and the existing infrastructure that'll facilitate our move over there as a city. So altogether, this is $2,390,000, or $390,875 to, to address all of these issues, so given the importance of each one of those line items, I would ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business today as well.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Finally, Mr. President, is the companion ordinance to that resolution that simply amends the fiscal year 2024 budget to transfer those funds into the appropriate accounts that I just listed, so to wrap up this transaction, I would ask that we also suspend the rules and consider this under new business today, please.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent.
And just as a point of privilege on this, I wanna make it clear that the current balance of our unassigned funds here in the city is approximately $24.5 million, we'll transfer these funds out, which will adjust that balance, but it's still, based on our finance and accounting department, it's still well above what we expect, or we, what we consider to be healthy savings of 20 million or more, so we're still in really good shape there, so with that in mind, I would move to adopt, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Minatra?
Mr. President, I have an item that I would like to be considered for new business today, it is related to selling the property located at 2702 West Meegen Boulevard, or otherwise the old fire station in Alabama City. We have a, a person who is interested, and we have the real estate agent with all the proper documents, we're ready to close on this property, and it will be closed prior to the next council meeting, so we would like to consider this as new business today, and if we could suspend, suspend the rules to do that, that would be great.
All right. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. President, no, go ahead and take, I'm sorry.
All right, okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Can I address that, Mr. President?
Yes, please.
So I wanna, I wanna make sure everybody understands, Councilwoman Minatra and Councilman Wilson also contacted me over the weekend, there was confusion with the purchasing LLC, they kinda went out of their way to try to go ahead and move in before the, the end of the closing. The mayor's office, along with the council people, got involved. We wanna reassure our Ritz Theater group that we support them, and we were not allowing this to happen, this was just some, one of the LLC that decided to take it upon themselves to cut the lock, and then tried to tell the people they had to move their stuff out, that is not the case. We have worked it out with the realtor to make sure that they have ample time to move their items out of the building, and also our Public Works will help them if necessary. Also, we're in talks with them, also about the building across from the Ritz Theater, I'm meeting with some of them, and hopefully the council people will join me that are interested in it, especially Councilwoman Minatra, so we can try to work out something to help accommodate them. We support them, the, also, the building will continue to remain the historical piece that it is, and maintain the signage, that was part of the contract. The library was carved out of the deed, and it still maintains in the city's possession, and there's no interest, and we, we support that library 100%, so I just wanted to spell any, any information that was out there. to spell any information that was out there.
I appreciate you offering that information. I think there was some misinformation, so it's good to get that cleared up. And as you stated earlier, you're kind of the point person for that.
Yes, sir.
So I know it'll be handled. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that. All right, is there any more new business? I think that's all. So we'll go to department reports, committees, and boards. Are there any of those today? Seeing none, we'll move to citizen requests. And we have one from Ms. Rita Smith today. She's going to come and speak about an event that's going to bring awareness to chronic illness. And Ms. Smith, thank you for being here today. Also, thank you for serving on our Board of Education. We appreciate that, and thank you for being the spouse of Councilman -- he's probably happier than any of us.
Jesus.
He's happier than any of us. But thank you and welcome. This looks like an interesting event. Thanks for helping us and tell about this.
Thank you, President Ben, and thank you, Mayor Craig Ford and all the council. Thank you for this opportunity to share. I am passionate about all things family, and this is an opportunity I have partnered with UAB to bring about awareness, chronic illness in our community. And so I'm asking, as a personal invite, that the council, the mayor's office, and anyone that's interested in being a part of this, to come out to a town hall. I promise you, it will last no longer than an hour. We're going to actually have two doctors. One is my cousin, Janesta Cockton. She's a pharmacist doctor, a pharmacist doctor, but also she was diagnosed with cancer and given six months to live. And she has beat it, got amazing testimonies. So she's going to share, as well as a doctor, a kidney doctor there at Ten Night Church, he's going to be sharing. So I ask all of y'all, if you can, just squeeze out a little, carve out a little bit of your time on next Tuesday at six o'clock at New Destiny. It will be amazing. Meal that's going to be shared, and I would love to see you there, and thank you. It's open to the citizens of Gadsden as well.
Well, thank you so much. And that's February the thirteenth at six o'clock at New Destiny Christian Church on Golden Rod.
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments, questions for Ms. Smith?
I just want to just say that was a beautiful citizen's request. Just thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you.
That's tough.
The most beautiful I've seen.
Rita, he didn't make the bed this morning.
All right. Mayor Ford, would you read the remarks by mayor and council?
So real quick, I know we're on time. I want to announce the Garbage Bill Amnesty Week is March the first through the eighth. You can pay fifty percent of your garbage bill debt that was created up until the December twenty twenty-three. That's important. March first through the eighth, pay fifty percent of garbage bill debt. And then, once those bills that have not been paid will be turned over to revenue, then they will go do their thing, which is not a pleasant experience. So we hope the Amnesty Week will create a lot of people coming in and paying their back bills. Our team is going to Montgomery tomorrow. The legislative session begins today, and I know we're all going down for advocacy day. We're working with the delegation on some bills that will help Gadsden. One of them is to stop the bleeding on the medical tax of equipment with the hospital association. We're in talks with them and our delegation. We're looking forward to the mayor's summit proposed by the chamber, which is Thursday morning at eight AM at Rainbow City Community Center. I want to thank the council for suspending the rules today on some items that were very time-sensitive. I wanted to thank the engineering department. One thing I put into play was the Greater Housing Authority hands out food once a month, and I decided to take one department at the City Hall, and they would be able to go out and work with them and help them hand out the food to the community. And today, for this month, was the engineering department. So he's here by himself working. They're back by now. It takes about two hours, but they need a lot of help handing out these boxes of food to people that come, and they register and they sign up for that. So that's with partnership with our housing authority. The last thing I want to say, Mr. President, is two things. It's funny how this story happened twice in one week. I was at the Chili Cook-Off, and a lady came up to me, and she said, "I've been wanting to talk to you." And she said, "I lived in somewhere in the Carolinas," and she said, "I wanted to relocate due to cost of living." I Googled the areas, and she said, "Gadsden kept coming up of all the positive news that had been coming out." And she said, "I came to visit this place, and I cannot believe this place, the natural resources that it has, the restaurants, the people." She said, "That is what made me want to locate the Gadsden, Alabama." And she purchased a home in East Gadsden, in District One's district, and she is just ecstatic about living in Gadsden. The next one is our CEO of Gadsden Regional. I went to the art show, and I want to compliment Ray Friday night. I guess you call it a show or a gallery or something, and it was just wonderfully attended. But the CEO said, "You want to go to dinner?" I said, "Absolutely." So the CEO and his wife, and my wife, and John and his wife, we all went to dinner. He got to telling us, he got to choose between Austin, Texas, Naples, Florida, and Gadsden, Alabama. And he said, "Craig, I got to tell you," he said, "I woke up in the middle of the night, and the Lord spoke to me and said, 'Go to Gadsden. It's where you want to be.'" He woke up and told his wife that's where they were going, and she said, "I'm ecstatic. I didn't want to give you my opinion. That's why I wanted to go all along anyway." And the number-one thing that they said, not only did they love Gadsden, but she said they loved the people. And I thought that was important, and I want to thank the people of Gadsden and Edwah County for offering that handout. We have a wonderful CEO that's come to Gadsden Regional. He's going to be a fantastic asset. My question to him was, "The only problem, we end up losing you every three years." He said, "I hope that's not the case. His plans are to retire here." So we also, one thing he said, he contacted previous CEOs that had been here, and they all said, "You'll love Gadsden. You'll love Gadsden." And one of the CEOs, who's no longer in the CEO business, moved off and relocated back to Gadsden, which I did not know. He was that Edwah gentleman, a talented guy. I keep his names missing me for right now, but he lives back in our area, too. So just to let y'all know, what we're doing is catching. And I want to thank the press, and I know they report exactly what they see, and sometimes they're going to report stuff we don't like. But it's just kudos to y'all and the council and the employees of the City Hall and also our people. So I just thought that was a great story.
That is a good story. Thank you. Thanks for sharing. Counselwoman Latham?
I have no remarks.
No remarks today. Councilman Smith?
Mr. President, I'd just always like to say thank you. Thank you to Mayor Ford and the staff and your leadership. It just gives a sense of pride. I know it may look like we spend a lot of money up here, but there's a sense of pride that comes along with seeing new vehicles and the city being cleaned up, the roadways being altered, and traffic flowing better. So I like to always come back and at least say thank you to all those who make all these things happen. So thank you to the council as well, all the department here that do what you do. We really appreciate you. I'm proud to be a citizen of Gadsden, Alabama. Thank you. One other thing to Mr. Bill Avery. Thank you, Bill. The city supports Mr. Avery. Had a great concert last week, a great turnout at two-ten at the track. So I just want to tell you thank you for what you bring to the city as well. Thank you, Mayor Ford.
Thank you. Councilman Avery?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to give a continuous prayer and support to the family of Reggie Davis and the Average Stow team as we memorialize Mr. Davis on this past week. Also, give condolences to the King family from afar as they prepare for the memorialization of Doctor, I mean, of Mr. Dexter King. Little local announcements, Loving the Culture, focus in the health and legal fair at the Union Baptist Church on the tenth, February nine AM through one PM. That's six thirteen Henry Street, includes health screenings and more. Another focus would be at the Mary G. Harden Center of Culture Arts Exhibition, Glory Honor Ritual on February the sixth through the twenty-ninth, and the Black Gadsden Historical Roaming Exhibition, February the tenth, nine AM through one PM. Locations includes Friendship Baptist Church, St. John CME, and Union Baptist Church. Central Carver Museum, February the tenth, twelve noon through six PM. Another one at Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church, February the eighth through tenth, three PM through eight PM, and February the eleventh, ten thirty AM through one PM. Black Expo and Family Fun Day, February the tenth, two PM through six PM at the Jelena Harris Memorial Square, Carver Square, ten thirty Tuscaloosa Avenue. And you can find this at also on Loving the Culture, L-O-V-E-N-T-H-E culture, C-U-L-T-U-R-E dot org, for more details about the February Black History events, which there are quite a few. Want to give a big shout-out to also Zabrell Rivers in Concert Thursday, February twenty-second at Mary G. Harden Center for Culture Arts. It's a free concert, so please go check out Mr. Rivers with his musical talent and skills right here located in District Three, just continuously to give more celebrations through this Black History Month. Want to highlight the venue at the Kusa Landing on February the seventeenth at seven AM, the Kiwanis Club and their, the Kiwanis Club of Gadsden Pancake Day. It'll be Saturday, February the seventeenth, seven AM. Also, as more announcements goes for Black History Month and the events that are held in Gadsden, there is a gathering of a Black History Parade on Tuscaloosa Avenue on the last day of February, which is on a Thursday, I think it's the twenty-ninth. So be, and we're asking for any and everyone to participate and be involved in the event along with its historical measure as it relates to Black History events all over. Final, to sum up my comments, I want to remember someone here, local from Gadsden, and his name is James Alexander Hood. Mr. Alexander Hood was the first African-American male student to register and attend the classes at the University of Alabama in Tuscaloosa, a previously all-white institution here in the state. On July the eleventh, nineteen sixty-three, Alabama Governor George Wallace defied the court order and physically stood in front of the flagship University of Alabama Foster Auditorium door to deny entry to Hood and Malone as they attempt to register for classes. He declared that the two students were unwelcome and unwanted. In response, President John F. Kennedy federalized the Alabama National Guard and threatened the governor with an arrest if he continued to bar the admissions of the students. In a compromise, Wallace allowed Hood and Malone, surrounded by federal marshals, to enter through an adjacent door. Hood registered for classes at the University of Alabama. However, two months of repeated racial threats in the exceedingly hostile academic environment, he left UA for his psychological and physical safety and enrolled at Wayne State University in Detroit, Michigan. Nineteen seventy, Hood received a bachelor's degree in arts from Wayne State. Two years later, nineteen seventy, he received his master's degree in criminal justice at Michigan State in Lansing. Nineteen fifty-five, Hood returned, nineteen ninety-five, I'm sorry, Hood returned to the University of Alabama to pursue a doctor's degree in philosophy in interdisciplinary studies. He completed his program in two years in ninety-seven. Ironically, Hood and former Governor Wallace had bonded over the years, and Wallace announced that he wanted to attend Hood's Doctor Hood- Hooting on May seventeenth and personally give him his degree, but poor health prevented the governor to do so. Wanted to recognize Hood, who is also November tenth, nineteen forty-two, born here in Gadsden, Alabama, to Miss Octavia Hood and to Mr. Octavia Hood and Margaret Hughes Hood. James had two brothers, Arthur James Hood, Lamont Hood, and one sister, Ramona Denise Hood Thomas, a graduate of Carver High School and originally attended Clark, Atlanta Clark College, now Clark Atlanta University and HBCU as well. So to the Hood and Mr. Hood and his absence from this earth, but not, of course, from us in spirit, I wanted to recognize him on this February Black History Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Very good information. Councilman Wilson?
I don't have much, just two things. I'm sure that the current and former CEOs of Gadsden Regional had nothing but good things to say about District Five representative in their comments. But this comes from my dad, actually, so everybody listen up, because my dad's retired, and he doesn't have a whole lot to do. So he calls me from time to time with some really interesting stuff. For those of y'all who don't know, there's a website, I think it's the Department of Revenue or Department of State, has an unclaimed funds website in the state of Alabama. You go in there, you plug your name and address in, and it'll tell you if somebody owes you some money somewhere. And it'll tell you, all it tells you is whether it's over a hundred dollars or under a hundred dollars. So let's say you moved out of a place one time, and you had a little bit of money left on your deposit to the power company. Well, they just send that money to the State Department, and then the state makes a register of it and puts it out there. It takes five seconds. You just plug your name in, hit enter. So my dad does this all the time for our entire family. He'll put our names in and call me and say, you know, Verizon owes you nine dollars or something. But yesterday, he called me and said, "I got bored, and I started plugging in the city of Gadsden." He said, "There's about fifty different registrations on there for the city of Gadsden where people owe us money, all these different corporations." He found some money for the EMA Department. Motorola apparently owes the EMA a bunch of money. The Gas and Water Works and Sewer Board has a bunch of money owed to them by several different organizations. So to all residents, go out there and see if anybody owes you any money. And to the city administration, maybe try to get somebody on that. I think several people owe us some money. There you go. That's all I got. Thank you.
That's good information. Thank you, Anthony.
Yeah.
And Jason. Counselwoman Minatra?
I just want to shout out to the Gadsden State Show Band. They performed Saturday night at the Big Brothers Big Sisters fundraiser, and they were outstanding. I'm sure they got a small donation, but, Mayor, we need to utilize that band more often. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Robinson?
I don't have anything.
Everything good at District Seven?
Everything's great.
All right.
Of course it is.
Jason will be happy.
Yeah, those new golden sidewalks should be going in any second.
I did get, I will add to your story. Chili Cook-Off, I had several people come up to us and talk about, you know, just how they're loving what's going on and how clean the city does look since this administration has taken over. So I was glad to hear that. I'm excited about how excited they are about, how excited we are about what we're doing.
That is good. I have similar comments, Mayor. I have all the time. That's probably the most comments I get is, "Thank you for cleaning up the city. Thank you for making the waterways visible." So kudos to our public works and everybody that's involved with that, and yourself. Thanks for that leadership. Wanted to start with, go back to the middle school program. Dr. Bliss, I think, two years ago resurrected this middle school scholars team at Gadsden Middle School, and they've done nothing but win, I think, almost every event. I think they've lost, they've come in second one time in two years or something like that. So, and that was in the state finals. Got beat on the last question of the tournament, you know, of the competition. So thank you, Dr. Bliss, for your leadership and your devotion to our children, our students. I think it, you know, rising tide lifts all ships. I know, you know, Santa Middle and Litchfield Middle are close behind. I think they're very competitive, and they want a shot at those titles also. So we're excited for our school system. What about Candido, y'all? I saw him sing on a Gadsden City website thing, and I thought, "He's got to come sing the National Anthem at the city council meeting." And it coincided with the seventh anniversary of the beautiful Rainbow Cafe, and so, and just what a sweet story of him coming, you know, on foot to America, and here he is. He's in our school system. He's going to get a job. And so it's just, it's just a really, really good, good story. And you could talk all day about Chip Rowe and what he's done with that program. He invented that. He started that, and hate to see him move to Spain. Maybe we can block him. You know, we do have certain ordinances and resolutions we could pass. So, and thank you to Kay Moore and her board at the DGI, the Chili Cook-Off. I was there. Tons of people. This place was just packed. I think twenty-nine teams, so that's just another great thing for Gadsden. And Mayor, to your comment about the people moving to Gadsden, I have two people in my district living Edenwood area. One husband and wife moved here from Maui, and one husband and wife moved here, I think, from either Ohio or Georgia. They both have really neat stories. They were coming to go somewhere else to look to where they wanted to live. I guess their end-of-the-day drive left them in Gadsden, and they stayed. I don't think they even went to the other destination where they had intended on moving. They just stayed here. They were going to stay one night and get up and leave the next day, and they stayed like maybe three or four days and went all over and just fell in love with the city. So I think there's a lot of stories like that out there. So it's pretty exciting. And then last but not least, I wanted to end with, I want to recognize the Henry Colp Junior family, as we call him, Big Henry, passed away this Sunday morning.
Jr. family, as we call him, Big Henry passed away this Sunday morning. What a life well-lived. A lot of things we see here in Gadsden today are the result of his efforts as just a contributor to our community. He was just a business titan for many decades here in Gadsden and Etowah County, served on about every board you can serve on. Just was a great citizen for our community. So to Joanna Colp, to Ms. Colp and Henry and Stacy and their family, we're going to miss Big Henry and just want to remember him today. Just what a titan for Gadsden and for Etowah County. They don't make him like that anymore. He's just, he's one of the dying breed, but just want to remember that family. They're a very strong local family. In fact, Henry, his son, Henry, who I grew up with, moved the escalators out of the Center for Cultural Arts and did it as a gift to the Center for Cultural Arts. So, much like his father, Henry III is following in his dad's footsteps by being a community partner and always giving, so. All right, if anybody doesn't have anything else, we do have a nuisance and abatement hearing today at 1:30 in this, in this chamber, so we will be here then. It's open to the public. Y'all have a great day.
We're adjourned.